Good evening. Welcome to the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll cover the Consent Agenda. First, listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. The agenda is designed to expedite handling of limited routine matters by City Council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda prior to the council's vote. The mayor will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have a specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Are there any items? On the agenda is the approval of special work session and regular meeting minutes of October 26th, 2021, approval of the expenditure vouchers of November 9th, 2021, approval of renewal fermented malt beverage off-premises liquor license for Walmart Incorporated DBA Walmart #966 located at 1835 East Main Street, Cortez. Authorization for the mayor to sign a master services agreement between the city of Cortez and Garver Engineering as approved by the city council on September 28th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Thank you, Councilmember Lucero. Keefoffer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen participation. Six citizens will be allotted time to address council. Are there any citizens wishing to address council? Yes, go ahead. Go up to the podium and state your name and address and state your business. Turn to green.
There we go. How's that?
There you go.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Kent Lindsey, Montezuma County Commissioner. Just to bring you up a little bit on speed of some of the stuff going on in the county, Friday we will release our survey on a sales tax question, and we'd like as much participation as we can get. We're looking for all citizens to help us out so we know whether we can actually proceed and put this question on the ballot or not. It's asking what the feelings are on a 1.9% sales tax increase in Montezuma County is. And other than that, I see that you're looking at dirt for your softball fields. It's kind of ironic today. We started talking about dirt for our arenas out at the fairgrounds. So, other than that, pretty much standard business, and we appreciate all the help we've been getting, especially with the new fiber contract. We just received it this afternoon, and I'm pretty sure it's going to pass next Tuesday. So, other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsey. Okay, any other citizens wishing to address? Okay. There are no presentations, no public hearings, under unfinished business. The Community Intervention Program Assistant Chief of Police Andy Brock and City Manager Drew Sanders, please. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. This is for approval of appropriation of funds to support the Community Intervention Program, CIP. After many months of planning, the steering committee believes the Community Intervention Program, CIP, is ready to move into the implimation... Implantimation. I'm kind of tied up here. Implamation phase. This will require funding and support from local government stakeholders. The CIP Steering Committee has received financial funding and support from Montezuma County to the tune of $228,640, Town of Mankas at $28,580, and the Town of Delores at $16,065, and will need the remaining amount of $135,000 from the city of Cortez to reach the funding goal of $408,285 required to operate the program for one year. At the city council meeting on October 12th, 2021, the council heard the presentation from the steering committee outlining the need for an alternate response system for mental health crisis, welfare checks, and other noncriminal activities within the community. Having CIP responding to those calls will allow fire EMS and law enforcement to clear those calls quicker and return to service so they're available for other emergencies. CIP program is a forward-thinking program that shows our government leaders and others are identifying positive solutions to improve and service the services offered to all the community members. The physical impact is $135 for the pilot program, or $135,000 for the pilot program. And the staff recommends the city council joins Montezuma County, the Town of Mankas, the Town of Delores by approving a one-time special appropriation of $135,000 from the general fund to support the Community Intervention Program in 2022. And this was prepared by Police Chief Vernon Knuckles.
For clarity, so the Town of Mankas, Town of Delores have already committed funds?
Yes, and Montezuma County.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a plan to, say, a year or six months in, six months in, to kind of give an update on how the program's going?
I would assume the committee's going to be watching it as a pilot program. They're going to be seeing where they can improve, what they can cut, what they need to increase on.
Okay, because I think-
And actually see what the benefit is to the, to the community.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-time appropriation of $135,000 from the general fund to support the Community Intervention Program, CIP program, in 2022.
Second.
Medina?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Keefoffer?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next item under New Business is bid results, the 2021 baseball, softball, soil mix. Interim Director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Boblet. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor and Councilpeople. We're on the fourth phase of our ballfield infield renovation project. We put out to bid for infield mix and received no bids as of the opening time. We did receive one on Monday. It was postmarked for the 14th, day before, but the way things are going, it ended up being late. So, what we'd like to request is to accept the bid as a single-source bid and award it to American Sports Material. So, it's your pleasure.
Is there, just trying to understand this a little better, is there any sort of legal thing because there wasn't any bids and that one still, that one came in late? Is there any sort of legal ramifications if we accept it?
We always have the right to refuse any and all bids, just because you don't think they're appropriate. We have a situation, if they didn't meet the bid time, technically they're not, excuse me, there's no bids. So, if you don't want to take that bid, you can. I'm a little concerned that it came in late, and I don't know why it came in late.
I did talk to the vendor, and he said he checked with FedEx and one of the other carriers, and they assured him that it would be overnight, and it says overnight on the packet. So, it could have showed up. It showed up Monday because the service center's closed on, on the weekend.
And it should have been there Friday?
Well, it says postmarked the 14th, and was that before the deadline?
Yes, the 15th was the deadline.
Okay. I mean, and we're in a rural area, so mail is not always guaranteed.
Well, yeah, and COVID.
And COVID, yeah.
And everything's slowed down. The only other option would be to rebid, and time is, time is somewhat important. If we could get this turned down before we get some weather turning.
This, this is also a pretty small amount as I'm looking at it. So, if I'm, you know, my lawyer mind, I balance risk against benefit. I think you could accept this late bid justifying it by the postmark, the 14th. It's the only bid. They explained they thought it was going to get here on time. They paid extra, obviously, to get it here on time. They didn't just stick stamps on it. So, I think we could accept that bid and move forward and-
It, it is a smaller amount than we've done in the past. This is the last field we usually do to it at time. And the last three bids, it was about, it would have chipped out to about $20,000, and this is 2,500 under that, which I also think is good, being that the cost of fuel to haul it down there, it's as expensive to haul it as it is to, to purchase it. So.
I think we should accept that bid. Do I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the 2021 baseball, softball soil mix to All American Sports Materials in the amount of $17,250.
Second.
Yasi?
Aye.
Keefoffer?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda under New Business is the Colorado Opioids Settlement. City Manager Drew Sanders?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I've submitted some documents to you that discuss the approximately $400 million opioid settlement with the state of Colorado. We now need to sign some documents to participate with that. It is estimated that the city of Cortez will receive approximately $94,337.76 out of this. However, it's, the timeframe for that is going to range between nine and 18 years, so we will get anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000 a year for however many years. I also think it's important to note to the council right now that there are some challenges to this. Just, I believe today, a federal court just overturned the, the JNJ opioid settlement with Oklahoma. So, there's still some risk involved, but for us to get our toe in the water, we do need to sign these. So, requesting the council authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate documents.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Colorado Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding and Settlement Participation Forms and authorize the city manager to continue to work with our local government partners and best use for these funds.
Second.
Dobry?
Aye.
Keefoffer?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item under New Business is quasi-judicial item, set a public hearing, a new hotel and restaurant liquor license for New Hong Kong of Cortez Incorporated DBA Hong Kong Chinese Restaurant. City Attorney Mike Green, City Clerk Linda Smith.
This is the first step in the process of approving the license, which is setting the public hearing. We're just asking you to set the public hearing for December 14th of 2021, when staff will present the application and the results of the investigations and recommendations.
Is, does this restaurant not already have a liquor license then?
Yes, they do have a liquor license. They have a beer and wine, and they would like to change it to a hotel restaurant, which is the reason for the new liquor license. Also, if they apply for a new license before the 1st of December, the state is waiving the fee. A transfer of ownership does not, they're not waiving that fee. So, those are two of the reasons they're applying as they are.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Like, what would be, just generally, what's the benefit of them moving towards a hotel and restaurant liquor license?
Well, first off, there's several reasons. The Hong Kong before is really close to the middle school, and it was grandfathered in when that happened. And a hotel restaurant license, the state, the city has authorized that the school footage does not come into play. So, that's one of the reasons that they're getting the hotel restaurant, because that could come into play now, that there's a new ownership. And second, a hotel restaurant allows them to serve other drinks besides beer and wine. Not that they do, but-
Like hard liquor?
They have that option.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is cider considered then? Like, is that beer and wine, or is that a hard liquor?
I don't know that answer. Cider.
Beer and wine, okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for a new hotel, hotel and restaurant liquor license for New Hong Kong of Cortez Incorporated doing business as Hong Kong Chinese Restaurant.
Second.
Councilmember Yasi, could you include the neighborhood boundaries, please?
Oh, sorry. Neighborhood boundaries as the city limits.
Second.
Thank you. Rainey?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Keefoffer?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under New Business is agreement with Montezuma County regarding broadband fiber network. City Manager Drew Sanders?
Mayor and Council, what has happened is that the city of Cortez and the Montezuma County worked together to get a fiber line that goes from 23, 2210 East on Main Street down to County Road G. And it was a joint venture in that we have interest down there, namely our airport, and then, of course, both entities have interest in making sure that the fire station down there gets connected to broadband. So, now that that project's completed, we have joint ownership in that, and so now it's time to enter into a formal agreement to enjoy the rewards of that. So, the city does not have a lot of interest in actually managing fiber that is outside of city limits, and we would like to defer to our county partners to manage that and market it, and then this would turn into a small revenue fund for both entities. The good news is anybody that comes in from that edge of the county will, at this point, have to hook onto that and, and use the fiber and light it up. So, this is actually a really good thing for both entities. The agreement that I sent you has since changed. So, there should be a new agreement with the highlighted changes in there. I will agree that those highlighted changes clarify a few things and actually make it more robust and, and a little better for both entities. So, there's also a resolution that should have been put there. So, I'd like to change up my original request to the, the council adopting the updated agreement and then authorize the mayor to sign both the agreement and a resolution that you have in front of you, and then authorize me to sign as the manager of the CCN network.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. Are there questions or comments from the council?
I was going to say, when you said, you know, for the city limit part, for the fiber, who's going to manage the other county?
Yeah, Montezuma County will do the managing of it from city limits on, that we jointly own. The only difference in there is that the city will do any maintenance that needs to be done in there merely because we just have the expertise on it right now, and, you know, it just makes sense for us to do it. It's going to be a nominal cost, and, excuse me, anything in there that's cost the entity money, it's just going to be shared anyway. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a question about this. Strands leased to the Southwest COG and to CDOT, and then to the U-Mount U-tribe, is that part of the 720?
It'll come out of the joint fiber that's available, which would be, we have half less 144, about 242, and then they have approximately the county, I want to say, 400 strands. And so, what they'll do is the CDOT, the tribe, will take from that total number less 144 that the city owns outright. And we don't have any, unless Drew got something today, we don't have any, we have interest and we have perhaps bargains from CDOT and the COG, but we have received nothing definite from the tribe yet. And it's anticipated they'll sign leases for the fiber from the hut at G2 all the way up to the other end at Main Street, 2210 Main Street. And they'll pay connection fees, cross-connect fees at both ends. So, that's where the revenue's going to come from.
Okay, and I, I guess when entities come to lease that, how is it going to be decided, like, whose strands they're using? Or is it, is it always going to be we get a portion, they get a portion regardless? It's just proportional?
What the intent was, if you want 144 strands, 77 we're going to come out of the county, and 77 we're going to come out of the city. At some point, we won't have any strands left, and it'll be all county, because our 144 will be maybe someplace else. And so, that's what was the intent. We're equal partners. Well, they pay us a little bit less, or no, there was a different percentages.
Yeah, because this profit sharing says 54%.
Yeah, and that represents that, that we have less strands in the pool right now.
Okay, so that's going to be no matter who leases it, it'll be proportional. Okay.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
And we are retaining that 144 for our use, especially the airport. Until we figure out what we're going to do with it, we're keeping it dark.
Any other questions or comments? Motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 32, Series 2021, regarding an agreement between Montezuma County and the city of Cortez. City of Cortez owned Cortez Community Network Enterprise regarding a broadband fiber network, and to authorize the mayor and the city manager as the manager of CCN to sign the agreement.
Second.
Get everything you needed?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, my microphone was on. I apologize. Keefoffer?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye. Thank you.
City Managers Report. Do we have anything, Drew?
It just so happens I do. Thank you. The following are the three things we're working on this week. The rehabilitation project for Water Tank One is well on the way. The door was cut, and the interior blasting is proceeding. Mayor and Councilmember Medina, you've all seen the major scope of that, and when I say they cut a door, it's massive. Anyway, they also went under, we also underwent our triennial sanitary survey on our water system, and we passed with one small deficiency, which is the top vent that was defective. So, we're getting, we're on that. Number two, our email migration to a new domain is now complete. I'd like to thank the council and all the city employees for their patience. While this transition occurred, we know that it was difficult. I wish to thank the IT Department for their hard work and dedication while undertaking this difficult task. This was day, night, and weekend for a while there, so thank you to them. Number three, submission period for the Public Works and Parks Director position is now closed. The recruiter advises me that we have a good candidate pool for both positions. The recruiter is now in the process of screening the candidate pool, and will have candidates to present in early December. Then, Mayor, if you'll indulge me, I've got an employee highlight. I'd like to highlight Vicky Haddix, who just happens to be in the booth there, and I'm actually hoping she can hear me. She works for the General Services Department. Vicky is always willing to help out any fellow employee when the city is, needed someone to run the camera system here at the council meetings. She volunteered to take that on and into her, you know, beyond work hours. Many times, she's taken her lunch hour to go to City Hall or other buildings to help someone with Microsoft Word questions. She always greets visitors at the service center with a smile, positive attitude and willingness to help them with what they're looking for. She loves to take on special assignments for her department and the city. As most of us, or see, as most know, she puts together the blood donation sessions at the service center throughout the year. She is a great cook and is always the first to volunteer to provide food for wellness luncheons and for city employees. And if you hadn't had one of her cinnamon rolls before, you are missing out. Addicted, I think, comes to mind for me. Anyway, General Services meetings usually have something special cooked up from Vicky. In her spare time, in addition to cooking, Vicky likes to attend concerts in Las Vegas, Nevada, camping with her family, and helping her family and friends in the area. She's the glue that holds the General Services Department together, and thank you, Vicky, for all you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
That concludes my report.
City Manager Sanders, thank you so much for doing those employee highlights. I think that's a very amazing thing that you do.
It's my pleasure.
Mayor, can I interject real quick and ask a question of the city attorney?
Interject, interject.
City, Mike, do you have any updates on the, the community gardens stuff?
It's done and successfully completed. Where we're at is, the program is going to be run by the community gardens people, the people from the, I'm spacing on the name of the entity.
Sharehouse.
Oh, it's the, never mind. It's okay, but we're-
Common ground.
Yes, they're going to run the thing. They're going to collect the money. They're going to spend the money, so it won't be part of the city budget. Getting old tech kids, I just want you to know from memory here. And so, we'll have a letter agreement that just says, this is what we understand you're doing. They seem to be pretty happy with that. I got to give a lot of, I'm not the only one that has to give kudos to everybody. Mark Boblet here is a lot of the reason this thing was successful. He's just magic with people, and after he talked to them, they were like, wow, this is what we want to do, Green. So, it's worked. And I think we'll be, we'll be stepping back to some degree. Ms. Diamond Rosa was also a big part of it. She said, hey, this is great. I don't have to do the lottery. They'll do the lottery. So, we actually got a program with some benefits. They've even already talking about coming back for more. They think they can do more gardens. I'll leave that to staff to decide, but this thing is a success so far.
Thank you.
Please don't encourage him, Mayor.
Speech? Speech, Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 2464. of a personnel matter under CRS Section 246402 for FI and not involving any specific employees who've requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of any elected official or personnel, or personnel public, personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Interviews will be held for the municipal judge position.
Second.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef offer?
Lucero?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Yazi?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn for the executive session and return to the regular agenda afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, everybody here? Okay. Let's see. The time is now 9:13 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Rachel Medina, David Rainey, Orly Lucero, Matt Keefoffer, Arlena Yasi, Robert Dobree, Mike Green, Drew Sanders, and the three candidates, Beth Padilla, Nate, and Drew. And let's see, for the record, any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing nine, we will return to our regular open meeting. Okay. See, we interviewed the three candidates for the municipal judge and we've come to decision and we've decided to pick Beth Padilla as the municipal judge. Congratulations, Beth. And Drew and Nate, thank you so much for...